Good evening, Happy New Year. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Will you please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some seats in the front if anybody would like to join us on the front, and we do have emergency exits on either side of the room. Any correspondence that can be posted is outside on the table when you walk in. So we have an exciting night, we have some recognition of students. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, first of all, of all, we have a number of students who are going to talk to us about the Delman Rocket Enrichment Program from Covert School. So, we're ready to begin. I'll go turn it over to Mr. Raymar. Mr. Raymar, are you gonna do the introductions?
I'm actually not.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having us to present Covert's Delman Rocket Program. We are Emmett Whalen.
Danielle Lou.
Sienna Scarpelli.
Along with the current teacher members of the Rocket Program Committee.
Melanie Rubin.
Valerie Sprague.
Jennifer Tronitano.
Alexander Detwiler.
Here are a few of Sienna's binders from the years past, from the past few years.
Back when my own children, who are now 28 and 23, were at Levy Lakeside School in Merrick, their teacher, Mr. Flick, had assigned a year-long list of voluntary cross-curricular enrichment activities, and my kids loved doing them. And I found it very valuable, and I spoke with Mr. Raymar, and we decided to bring it to Covert School around 2004, and we named it the Rocket Program.
At that time, a group of teachers got together and worked off that third-grade list to create activities for each grade level, K-5 and Core. This has always been a voluntary program with both intrinsic and extrinsic rewards built in. A while back, there were a few years when participation was at low. But three siblings from a Covert family continued on their own, completed their yearly tasks. The Delman family, single-handedly brought his program back to life, and several years ago, inspired the teachers to revamp and enhance the list to include social, emotional, physical, and philanthropic activities as well. To thank and honor their commitment, the teachers renamed the program the Delman Rockets.
We are really excited to have the Delman family with us tonight. Thank you. Karen has always been a staunch supporter of the Delman Rocket Program throughout the years. We currently have about 30 percent of our students participating in this voluntary enrichment program, with numbers growing each year. Each grade-level packet is sent home with every Covert student in the fall, with classroom reminders throughout the year, PTA email blast reminders prior to school vacations. In addition, the grade-level packets are always available on the Covert webpage.
The Delman Rocket motto is "Shoot for the moon, even if you miss it, you will land amongst the stars." Les Brown.
The best way to sum up what the program is, is to read the letter that we send home to all the students and all the families, so I'm going to read it very quickly. It will also be on the PowerPoint. Dear Covert students and families, get ready for takeoff. The Delman Rockets' enrichment program is blasting off again. Your mission, if you choose to accept it, is to complete as many enrichment activities from your grade-level list by Monday, June 1st. Attached, you will find your list of enrichment activities, which can also be accessed on the Covert homepage. You must complete them in number order. You may work at your own pace, there are no parameters for these assignments. These assignments are open to your own interpretation, so note, they can't be done wrong. Completed tasks should be kept in a three-ring binder, such as the examples we passed around. Students who complete their entire grade-level packet will be rewarded with a special event at the end of the school year. We hope that you will participate in this fun-filled, enriching program.
As you see in this slide, there are so many different types of activities, like science, art, philanthropy, math, geography, physical fitness.
Reading, social, emotional, and current events.
One activity we recently did was to make a list of 50 states and their capitals. I used the map of the United States. I started with Maine, and then went across the West Coast. Then, I continued by looking at the states on the map.
I used Google to research the states and their capitals. I found a website that listed the states, their capitals, state birds, and state flowers.
Another activity that we've done was to interview an older family member. I learned that when my older sister was little, she wanted to be an author.
I interviewed my grandma and learned about when she and my great uncle were kids, she used to go and get him for dinner when he was playing basketball with his friends. A philanthropic activity I did for the program was to give out Christmas trees to families who couldn't afford them in memory of my grandfather.
On my list of five things that I like about myself, I wrote that I am an artist.
I wrote that I'm a great painter.
I'm the only lefty batter in my family, that makes me special.
We each created Venn diagrams comparing ourselves with the character in a book. I compared myself to CJ, a main character in Molly's story. We both love art.
I compared myself to Luna Lovegood in Harry Potter. We both like unusual things.
I compare myself to Big Nate and Big Nate Gameon. We both play baseball, basketball, and soccer. Here are some other sample questions.
Each year, we've had a different culminating celebration for those who complete the entire program by the beginning of June. We've taken different trips to local restaurants for lunch and ice cream. During these lunches, we get to share our Delman Rocket experiences with each other and have fun interacting with different grade levels.
In the weeks to come, you'll be hearing about a new initiative at Covert School called Kindness Counts Month, where many of the activities during this groundbreaking project will go hand-in-hand with the Delman Rocket Program. Thank you so much for your time.
Does anyone have a question?
I do. In every book, the first line on every page was a number. The first line on the first page was a number. What does that...I missed that if you said that.
They have to read that number out loud.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And then they have to write down who they read it to.
Some of them have a very difficult number to read.
They're all different grade levels.
Please.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you so much, Covert. Thank you for coming. We're gonna move on to the recognition of our student athletes. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Yeah, we now move on to another dimension of life at Southside High School and in our school district. You know, many of the enduring memories that we have of our student years go well beyond what the classroom is able to provide us, and we are so fortunate in this school district to have so many of our teachers who dedicate their lives as professionals during the school day, as teachers, also take on after-school the responsibility of working with our, those very same students as coaches. So who are those masked and caped crusaders? They are standing around the back of the room, and we want to thank them in advance for the incredible work that they do with our athletes.
Thank you.
So, if we could. After every season, though, we want to take advantage of the opportunity to acknowledge the outstanding play of certain members of each of the teams. So I'm gonna turn this over to Carol Rosetto. If she would please go to the microphone. Carol, where are you? Uh-oh. Well, I'm not sure what happened there. So, what we will do now is, we will then take the opportunity to go down the agenda. The first of the teams that we are going to recognize tonight will be girls varsity volleyball. And so Cheryl, if you wouldn't mind. Have you?
Even better.
Oh, here she is. Alright.
You know what? That's a good one.
What? You gave us a bit of a scare there.
Hi, sorry.
So, at any rate, what we started to do was to say, if you would please take the opportunity to talk a little bit about the awards that they're receiving, and also then call up each of the athletes as we take this opportunity to acknowledge their incredible work.
Absolutely. Welcome, everybody. It is my pleasure to introduce the next group of student athletes and to honor them for their outstanding achievements during the Fall 2019 season. Through a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication, on and off-season, all of these individuals earned All-County honors or above. Before I begin to speak about their individual accomplishments, I'm also proud to announce that Southside High School has once again been recognized by the New York Public High School Athletic Association as one of only 10 schools in Nassau County last year to receive the distinction of being a Scholar-Athlete Team School of Excellence. So congratulations to our athletes. I am also proud to announce that we're continuing the trend. During this fall, Boys and Girls Cross-Country, Boys and Girls Soccer, Boys Golf, Boys Football, and Girls Cheer, Swim, Dive, Tennis, and Volleyball Teams were also recognized by New York State Public High School Athletic Association as Fall 2019 Scholar-Athlete Teams. So congratulations. Okay, to start us off with the individual accomplishments, I'd like to invite Coach Chris Colasante and Lauren Zola from the tennis team, who placed second in the conference, to join me. Guys, yeah, just kinda go in front there. Coach Colasante stated that Lauren has been an instrumental part of the varsity girls' tennis team's success for the past four years. Lauren is a skilled and disciplined player who earned All-County honors as a sophomore doubles player. As a junior, Lauren and her partner were Doubles County Champions and played in the New York State Championship, both earning All-County and All-State honors that year. And this past season, Lauren earned All-County honors by advancing to the quarterfinals in the Nassau County Individual Singles Tournament. And congratulations, Lauren, and the varsity girls' tennis team. Next, I would like to call to the podium, coaches Webster and Figurito, and runners Chris Goldstein and Charles Ohanian from the Boys Cross-Country team. They ended their season as division champions and conference runner-up. Boys, wave when I call your name. Last year, as a freshman, Chris Goldstein quickly made a name for himself. Follows directions well, right? And proved in his early races that he had the skills necessary for success in cross-country. Unfortunately, he sustained an injury and was unable to compete for the rest of his first season, but this year, as expected, Chris came back with a vengeance and was consistently ranked first or second on the team. As a result of his dedication and effort on the course, Chris earned All-Conference and All-County honors, proving himself to be one of the top runners in Nassau County. Captain Charles Ohanian has seen tremendous success over his four years on the team, but during the last two seasons was when Charles exploded as a force to be reckoned with, earning All-Conference and All-County titles. Coach Webster stated that he rose to the top of an otherwise very crowded, very competitive field of athletes. Under Charles's captainship this year, he led the boys to a perfect 6-0 division record and a 12-1 overall record, and second place in the conference. Congratulations, Chris and Charles, and the varsity Boys Cross-Country team. Dr. J is comparing times. Wonder if he'll do that with the football players. Thank you, boys. Next, I'd like to invite Avery Brule, Kaitlyn Moore, and Carly Wolfle from the Girls Cross-Country team. The girls' team finished their season as division champions and conference and county runner-ups. Ladies, wave. For the past three years, junior Avery Brule has been a force, not just for Southside, but in Nassau County as a whole. She is a three-time All-Conference and All-County athlete who has earned the privilege of running at the state championship three times. As a freshman and sophomore, Avery ran as part of the team, and this year, she qualified as an individual. Avery also earned a spot on the Southside's All-Time Top 20 Chart for 5K Race Times. Congratulations, Avery. Senior and captain, Kaitlyn Moore, is a four-time All-Conference and four-time All-County athlete. Kaitlyn finished third in the counties as a freshman, fourth as a sophomore, and was also part of the county championship team that year. Kaitlyn also earned the honor of representing Nassau County at the state championships three out of her four years at Southside. Kaitlyn was a two-year captain and earned a spot in the Southside Top 5K Times of All-Time. Congratulations, Kaitlyn. Matter of deduction, Carly. Senior and captain, Carly Wolfle, has done it all. She was a two-year captain who was not just interested in pursuing her own goals, but worked with and encouraged her teammates to give it their best. Carly is a four-time All-Conference and four-time All-County athlete. She placed second in the county as a freshman and junior, and was the county champion as the sophomore and senior. She was instrumental in the team's county championship senior season, her sophomore year. Carly has run at the state championships four times, finishing 15th place this year, earning her All-State honors. Carly literally holds every record that Southside has to offer in cross-country. Carly was also named as a News 12 Scholar-Athlete a few weeks ago, and was honored on their program. Coach Webster stated that she isn't just an athlete, she's an incredibly kind, intelligent, and gifted young lady who makes everyone feel important. He was so distraught over her graduating that he had a hard time writing this next sentence. Carly will be serving her country next year as she enters West Point. Congratulations, Avery, Kaitlyn, Carly, and the varsity girls' cross-country team. Now, I would like to invite Coach Fred Paul and players Danny Kelleher and Robert Reese from the Boys Varsity Soccer Team. Oh, and Steve Kazajanski. Let's see if they could wave as well as the girls. Robert Reese has been a four-year member of the varsity soccer team and a two-year captain. He started for the Cyclones all four years and has been recognized as an All-County Honorable Mention the last two years. Coach Paul stated that Rob has a tremendous soccer IQ and field awareness, and as the team's central midfielder was the conduit between the team's defense and offense. He was a phenomenal captain who led by example on the field. Congratulations, Rob. For the past three years, Danny Kelleher has been the starting goalkeeper for the Cyclones and recognized as an All-County selection all three years. This year, he also earned All-State honors and was selected as the Conference Defensive Player of the Year. In addition to being the best goalkeeper in Nassau County and scoring two goals and having three assists from that position, Coach Paul stated that Danny was also the catalyst for the Cyclone offense, and that his ability to distribute the ball with both feet and arms helped the team's counterattack. Coach Paul stated that Danny was a spectacular player who led their team with distinction. Congratulations, Danny and Rob, and the Boys Varsity Soccer Team. I would now like to invite coaches Jenna Abgarian and Chris Alouisi, and players Julia Kavanaugh and Madeline Roberti from the varsity girls' soccer team. Julia, who just, as you can tell, came off the basketball court, has been an influential part of the ladies Cyclones for the past three seasons. Last year, Julia was recognized as an All-Class Athlete by the coaches in the county. As a senior captain this year, she was nominated as one of the top goalkeepers in the conference, earning All-County honors. Coach Abgarian stated that Julia has been a leader for the Cyclones both on and off the field. Her ability to lead the team as a student athlete, as well as her ability to make numerous big saves in clinched situations, was one to be noted this season. Congratulations, Julia. Coach Abgarian stated that if there is one player who has come into her own and really shown the personal and athletic growth and maturity that it takes to lead the team as a junior, it would be Madeline Roberti. Last year, Maddie was recognized as an All-Conference Athlete by the coaches in the county, and this year earned All-County honors. Maddie's knowledge of the game, tenacity in center midfield, and determination to defend and play the Cyclone's style of play is like no other. She was an example on and off the field and represents what it means to be a lady Cyclone. Congratulations, Julianne Maddie and the varsity girls' soccer team. Now, I would like to invite Coach Keith Lessick and football players Xavier Brewster, Nick LaCausi, Richie Patron, and Will Pickett to join me. Varsity football, led in part by these four young men, had an exciting year, ending their season with an appearance in the Nassau County Championships for the first time since 2001. Xavier Brewster has been a three-year varsity starter and one of the captains who led the team this year. Coach Onesto stated that Xavier was fast enough to be a lockdown quarterback and big and strong enough to play linebacker. Xavier was also an elite special teams player, was third on the team in tackles, and earned All-County honors this year for his skill, ability, and effort. Congratulations, Xavier. Richie Patron has been a two-year varsity starter and one of the captains who led the team this year. Coach Onesto stated that Richie led the Cyclones in interceptions this year and was an integral part of Southside's offense as both a blocker and a vertical threat in the passing game. Richie was recognized by the coaches in Nassau as a 2019 All-County athlete. Congratulations, Richie. William Pickett has been a three-year varsity starter and a two-year captain. Will finished his career as a Cyclone at the top of the leaderboard as the football player with the most passing yards in a season. He also placed second for both rushing yards in a season and rushing yards in a career, and is the only player in Southside's history to rush for over 1,000 yards in two consecutive seasons, totaling 4,400 yards in his career, which is also the most ever in school history. Will will be, has been awarded with All-County Honorable Mention honors as a junior, and this year, as an All-County athlete, as a first-team All Long Island athlete, and potentially as an All-State athlete, which will be announced next week. Will was the runner-up for the Schneider Award, which is given to the top quarterback in Nassau County, and a nominee for the Thorpe Award, which is given to the top player in Nassau County. Congratulations, Will. Nick LaCausi has been a four-year, two-way starter and a two-year captain. Nick finishes his career at South, as Southside's all-time leader in receiving yards, and is the only player in Southside's history to have 1,000-plus yards in both rushing and receiving. Nick is a two-time All-County athlete, a two-time All Long Island athlete, and potentially a two-time All-State athlete, which again, will be announced next week. This year, Nick was also selected as a member of the Nassau chapter of the National Football Hall of Fame's Golden 11. Congratulations, Nick, Xavier, Richie, and Will. Next, it is my privilege to introduce the third-in-the-state varsity girls' volleyball team, led by coaches Cheryl Scallas and Courtney Grubb. Hold on, girls, I'm calling you up. Alright. Girls, when you hear your name, walk up to the front. Madison Gamber, Jaden Gurrell, Cameron Hoffman, Ryan, hold the claps for now. Ryan Hoffman, Sarah Hudson, Sophia Jackson, Mary Kelleher, Ava Kelly, Faith Lamachia, McKella McCormick, Kerstin Kirk, Claire Richter, Kaitlyn Tolson, and Annalee Sola. We're missing a few because they are at their practices. So, I'm gonna announce all the individual winners. If you are here, just take a step forward so that we know we're talking about you. So Ava Kelly was named as the Nassau County Coaches Association Scholar-Athlete. Good girl. Madison Gamber earned Nassau All-Tournament honors. Faith Lamachia and Annalee Sola earned All-County Honorable Mention. Ryan Hoffman earned All-County honors. Cameron Hoffman earned New York State All-Tournament, All-State, and Nassau County All-Tournament honors. Sophia Jackson earned New York State Volleyball Coaches Association Sportsmanship Award and Nassau All-Tournament honors. Kaitlyn Tolson, New York State Volleyball Coaches Association Player of the Year, and earned All-State, All Long Island Second Team, and All-County honors. Jaden Gurrell earned All-State, All Long Island Player of the Year. Jaden Gorel earned All-State, All Long Island Player of the Year, All Long Island First Team, Nassau Class A MVP, and All-County honors. It is also my privilege to announce that Coach Cheryl Scallas was named as not only the All Long Island Nassau Coach of the Year, but also as the New York State Volleyball Coaches Association Coach of the Year. When I asked Coach what she said she was most proud of this season, are the lifelong attributes that each player has honed this season. The team's strong work ethic, dedication, resiliency, perseverance, and the ability to fight through adversity are all of the characteristics that each player has developed this season. So congratulations, ladies. I'm not done yet. As a team, the girls ended their season as the Nassau County Class A Champions, and quite the game that was, as the Long Island Champions, and third in New York State. I am also very proud to announce that this group of young ladies were also recognized for their sportsmanship throughout the season from the Nassau County Officials Association and were given the New York State Class A Team Sportsmanship Award at the state championships. So ladies, well done. Congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Congratulations. Thank you to all of our student athletes, our coaches. Congratulations on a great season. Thank you. We're going to go a little out of order. We're waiting on our guest speaker coming to talk about the Pediatric Behavioral Health Clinic. So we're going to move on right now to items for discussion and we'll do our new district school app.
I'm going to turn this right over to Dr. Pelletieri. Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So I've said this before, you may have heard it, but it has been said, "The only problem with communication is the mistaken belief it has taken place." So George Bernard Shaw said that, Mr. Webster. The idea that we are trying to really push communication is not one that is going to be covert or kept to us. We are going to overtly talk about communication as we go forward. This is an attempt at that. So we do have a new year and new technology. One of the ways that we're going to over-communicate, our plan to over-communicate to our community is to combine all of our communication resources in one platform. So you may have known that we have a website produced by one organization, an app produced by another organization, phone calls that go out, those famous phone calls everyone's happy to hear, Mr. Bartels at 5:30 in the morning when he calls about snow. We've gotten really good at it, right, Robert? We're doing it like earlier, like the day before, we've gotten better and better at it. So all those were separate entities, though, and they did not speak to each other and they were cumbersome. We needed to change something on the website, we then needed to go back and change it in the app. The phone calls are a whole different messaging system and the emails have just become a real mess. We had emails going out just to dads for some reason, we had emails going out to moms for some reason, we had emails going out to everyone, we have people getting six emails, we have the same person not getting an email at all the next day, which is really, really irksome and bothersome. So what we have done is combined all of our communication platforms into one school messenger system. So School Messenger will be hosting our website, they're providing us with a program or a platform called School Messenger Communicate. I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. We're going to still have our Schools app, but it will be a new and improved app and there will also be a School Messenger app. So not one app, but two apps. And so I'm told by the youngsters that work with us nowadays that, just like Facebook has an app and then they have an app underneath that, right, Odette? They have an app underneath that called Facebook Messenger. We will have our app, which pulls from our website, which details all the things that we do in our school district, but we will also have a School Messenger app, which will be streamlined to simply push out information to people. So you can go to that app as well. Website hosting information is going to be streamlined for all levels of our communication. Support will come from one source. So when we have an issue, we don't have to call people at this site or that site or try to tackle where it's from. We have one program that we're working with and all of our updates now will go through the app, which will make it much easier and again, much less cumbersome. School Messenger Communicate is a platform that allows us to do push notifications. For a while here, earlier this school year, we were not doing push notification. We could not get it to work. We worked with a company who kept pointing back at us and then finally, a couple of weeks ago, turned around and said, "We recognize it's an issue on our end and we're going to work to fix it." But by that time, we had already moved along in our process to find something that was working for us. This new app will do push notifications, it will do email for us, it's an emergency calling system. Mr. Bartels, you're going to have to learn a new system to make those snow phone calls. I apologize, but it'll be for the good in the end. And it will do text messaging for us as well, you can sign up for that. It also can be delivered in many different languages and text-to-speech. Our app will be updated again much quicker and as often as needed. It integrates with School Messenger, which is a nice piece. It works on all Apple and Android products and allows parents and teachers to stay connected. And that means that as a coach or a teacher, I can put together a program, kind of like Remind, some people use an app called Remind, where I create a class and push out information that way. I can now do that, however, rather than use that third-party product, I can use something in Rockville Center Schools, I can use this app to communicate that information. And we can communicate with students, we can set up classes, coaches can set up programs for students and for parents as well when they want to communicate new information. This is just a mock-up of what the new app will look like, very similar to our old map, except it's going to have more capability for us, we're very happy about that. And lastly, the School Messenger app, again, once it's going to be scrollable, it's going to be streamlined, it's going to be able to push out our district notifications, much simpler format. Again, conversation can go back two ways, that's something we're going to have to develop and do professional development on, so it's not going to happen immediately, but it can happen as we move forward. And again, teachers can set up programs directly with kids, with students in their classrooms so that they can engage in terms of, for when there are those snow days and kids can then do homework and things like that. That'd be fun, right? Multimedia messaging options to share classroom information, images and videos. Again, we can post more information and put more there, more 21st century teaching and learning because we have those opportunities. So just wanted to give everyone a heads up, the app is being created now, it's kind of in a beta form, we're hoping to be able to roll it out within the next couple of months and do some professional development around it and have it ready for our school community at the turn of the new school year. So hopefully by July 1, June, we'll be able to push it out. Once you download the new app, you'll automatically be asked or prompted to download the School Messenger app as well. So again, you'll have that opportunity, you'll set it up just like the app now with the different schools that you want set up. Again, the idea is overall, let's get as much information out to our school community and communicate as much as possible with our folks. People have asked for it, I know the board asked me a couple of years ago about streamlining this process. I think we found the right product to do that with Odette Peralta's help and Jackie Wong, who's helped with that as well. Noreen, everyone's really pitched in on this one, so I appreciate it. That's it.
Any questions?
We'll hold our questions till the next few minutes.
Sure.
After we see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep going. What'd you say?
Calendar, right?
Yeah, we're going to go to the calendar. So the 2021 district calendar. Dr. Jay, at the last meeting, we had a conversation about the calendar. We talked about whether or not to start after Labor Day. I think we had come to terms that this year, we didn't have to start before Labor Day, so we were looking to start after. Since the last meeting, I think there was a suggestion about possible moving of dates within that calendar after. Do you want to explain what happened since the last meeting?
Yeah, if we... The reason why the question about Labor Day was, came into issue, was how late Labor Day fell this year. In 2020, it comes up on September the 7th. So we will, quite frankly, be able to accommodate the starting of school on the 8th, even though the superintendent's conference day and our teachers will be back before then, the students will begin on Tuesday, the 8th. There is also an attempt on our part generally to try to take the days that we have off that are movable within the calendar and place them as late into the school year as we can in order to protect us in the event that we have a pretty problematic snow year. So there is a day that is in question. It is the Monday after the Easter Passover break, which is on April the 5th. I know there has been some question as to whether or not it should be moved to November the 25th. We have, in recent years, become somewhat accustomed to having that Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. You know, the traditional travel day, if people could get a head start on that Tuesday night, I think for many families, it makes a huge difference. So it would mean swapping that day on April the 5th and moving it to November the 25th. Generally, it has been in the past and it would be my recommendation again to stick with the April 5th date primarily because it protects the school district and all the other vacations from, in other words, there are a minimum number of days that we have and if we run into problems with snow days, that would be there for the first day that we would have to remove from the calendar as a holiday. If we move it to November and the snow comes after that, we don't have that flexibility and we're usually into either the February vacation or the Easter Passover break. So at any rate, it's worthy of a discussion and it ultimately is a decision that the board has to render, usually on the basis of input from all of the Teachers Association, I mean, the various associations and unions in our community as well as parents.
And do we have input from the Teachers Association specifically?
Frank Van Sant is here and I believe that he has a different opinion than mine. So you may want to open the mic.
Jay, I talked to the snow gods and they said it wasn't going to snow.
Right.
So I didn't take a straw poll, but I would dare say that the teachers would rather have that Wednesday than that April Monday.
By the time this rolls around, I'm not in the position anymore to call it snow days, so I may have to see to the snow gods that you were listening to. Right.
We can make a friendly wager on it.
Right, okay. So I'm not sure what you want to do and whether or not you want to open the microphone to or discuss it later on. You know, generally, we act on it at this time of the year, but there's no necessity. I mean, once we get into February, it becomes a problem.
I'd rather hold off on voting on it until we have a discussion since it's a new development. So I'll open up questions to board members first, if anybody has any about calendar, and then we can open up the mic for specific calendar questions. Any board member? Anybody would like to come to the microphone just regarding the calendar? If you would like to state your piece or ask a question, you're invited to do so. We just ask you to use this microphone over here. Should we move it?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. If you come to the mic, just state your name and address, please. Thank you, Jackie. Okay. So we'll vote on it next meeting and see if there's anything that comes out of any questions anybody has following tonight's meeting, but not to publicly disagree with the superintendent, but I can see why people like that Wednesday off. I know that was one of the reasons people wanted to start before Labor Day, to get that day. We can accomplish both.
Yeah, it's become very popular.
I would see if we can accomplish both.
I'm not disputing the reasons for doing it, but again, just from the point of view of taking a look at the list of days that we have available to us, in the event that we run into trouble in December and January, we're already into...
Right. But we build in four days, correct? We build in four snow days into our calendar without having to start... In other words, other school districts, they have one snow day and they start ticking away at their vacation time.
We have 184 days in our calendar. We have two superintendent's conference days, 182, so you're right, we have a cushion of really two days.
We have a cushion, right. We'd have to get to a fifth day to start taking away vacation days.
Somewhere in that vicinity, that's right, yeah.
All right, so we'll hold off the vote till the next meeting in case anybody would like to contact us, but we'll have another discussion at the next meeting. Okay? Thank you. I see our guest speaker has arrived, Gina Bounds. Sorry to throw you right in, but we're going to step back a page. We'd like to invite Gina Bounds, speaker. We're going to ask you to use this mic over here, if you don't mind, so you could address everybody.
Someone will be pointing at you like any second now.
Okay. So Dr. Leahy, would you like to introduce Gina?
Sure. So for many years, agencies across the state, like the State Aid Department, American Medical Association, American Psychological Association, kind of worked in silos when it came to the support and care of students' non-academic needs, medical, social, emotional, mental health needs. So between the increase in the need for those services and the state mandates and laws that have followed and our own personal concerns about rising levels of mental illness in young adults and adolescents, we are looking for more and more for partnerships that might help support the needs of our students. So Gina Bounds and Dr. Fuhr will be here as well.
Actually, we're going to have Arianna, our Mental Health Counselor, who just walked in on cue.
Excellent, on cue. Our representative of Northwell, and they represent one such partnership that has developed as a proposal to help districts. This model, which Ms. Bounds will get into in more detail, is essentially a partnership of several neighboring school districts, including Rockville Center, which will allow our students to get priority access to mental health care and help us to form treatment plans for students with more severe needs. It's also going to be supportive of our current PPS staff. It represents the support of a full-time psychiatrist, mental health professional, customer service representative that'll help us to streamline and make more available mental health services for our students. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Dr. Leahy. Many of you know me, Gina Murray Bounds. I'm a Rockville Center mom, my most important job, but I also work at Cohen's, I'm an ABP of the pediatric service line. I'm here today to talk about the school partnership. I have with me one of our licensed mental health counselors specifically hired for this program, Arianna Matalia. She started a couple of months ago, trained in our urgent care setting in Cohen's, and opened our mental health clinic on Thursday, so very excited. Yep.
So just highlighting the need of the service. About one in five children have mental health concerns and the suicide is actually the second-leading cause of death, unfortunately, for our kids ages 10 to 24. The access to mental health care has recently improved, but there is still a much greater need to access. The Child and Adolescent Psychiatry Division maintains a really difficult division of treatment to access for many of our families and it's really having that early intervention that would be able to help the patients in the emergency room settings and diffuse that need out to our outpatient settings. As of now, the direct contact for a child psychiatrist would really be in an emergency room setting and unfortunately, that's not really the best place to get a long-term treatment setting because really, when somebody goes to the emergency room... treatment setting, because really, when somebody goes to the emergency room, their immediate need is going to be determination between admission or discharge. There's not really that in-between, that care management piece that's necessary. Oftentimes, children end up in limbo with getting treatment or linkage to outpatient coordination services. So, to be able to kind of bridge that need would be a missing piece in this whole foundation. Schools, CPS, families, pediatricians, all usually reroute to the emergency room in order to have that immediate access, but they're really just getting that assessment piece. Medications, if necessary, are usually not initiated in an emergency room setting, and then the patient is relied on to really just wait until an outpatient provider is available to them. There are a variety of existing models, including the emergency room. We do also, through South Oaks Hospital, have some community relations where they have an integrated psychiatrist that's available to do consultations within the school districts, but that doesn't offer all of the points needed in terms of getting same-day access to a counselor like myself, getting some same-day access to a medical doctor or a child psychiatrist more specifically, being able to, on top of that, have the care management piece. Aftercare follow-up is not offered in a typical pediatrician's office, let alone in an emergency room. So, the urgent care model is able to approach that middle ground that isn't offered in an outpatient setting and isn't really accessible through an emergency room, where we're able to do a full assessment and also offer the follow-up coordination of care that the patient will need in order to establish treatment and stability at the lowest level necessary to maintain their independence in the community. And that's really the goal of the urgent care model, is to be able to assess the needs of the patient and allow them to continue living in their current environment and be able to function while attending school, while living with their families, because the last thing that we want is for them to end up in an emergency room or on an inpatient setting. This is just not completely updated, but this is as far as November 2019. The blue that you'll see is our pediatric emergency room, behavioral health visits, of which about 40% of them actually come from school districts, with the most common diagnosis being adjustment disorder. If there are any immediate changes to a child's environment, they have difficulty adjusting, more so than an adult would. Depression, anxiety are also leading diagnoses. So, if you can tell a little bit, towards the tail end, there is a decrease in the blue line, which is emergency room visits for pediatric behavioral health, and the orange portion is since we introduced the urgent care model at our Cohen's Medical Center in New Hyde Park, there's been an uptick of visits there with the decrease of visits within the emergency room setting. With on top of that, a 98% satisfaction from the families, and we do have about 80% of referrals to ongoing treatment from our urgent care facility setting. So, this is where we have our lines right now.
So, aside from the urgent care model at Cohen's, we're really looking at a fully-integrated model. We're looking at like kind of a tri-part mission. One is, of course, the urgent care, or in lesser case, hopefully, in more acute cases, but lesser volume of urgent emergency care. But also, we're integrating this into our primary care offices. So, five of our 17 primary care offices right now have some type of mental health provider in their office. The goal is to have all 17. And then, we, of course, the third piece of that, you have your urgent care model, you have your primary care model, and the third piece is integrating into the schools. And there's various ways that Northwell is doing that. One is with the South Oaks model of offering a psychiatrist once a week into the school setting. That's for a consultative service, and what we're proposing today is more of an urgent care model where we would partner with the districts to have instant access to a child psychiatrist five days a week, nine to five, eight hours a day. So, as I said, it's five days a week, Monday through Friday, nine to five. The idea is a collaborative strategy, and this is the piece, I think, the access is very similar to what we have in New Hyde Park in our CCMC urgent care setting, but the difference here really is a collaborative strategy. The idea that we are working with the PPS staff of the various school districts, we're talking about speaker engagements, programmatic curriculum insight, onsite crisis intervention if and when needed, onsite counseling, both for staff and for students. But more importantly outside of that, it's just a real consultative collaborative model where any one of your PPS staff could call us up on the phone and say, hey, you know, we have some questions about Johnny, and we're not really sure what, you know, what to make of it. We're not sure if Johnny's parents are gonna be involved. Let's call Mom and Dad, and let's work together, very much like we all do in the CSC meetings, right? It's very much a team approach. That's what we're looking to do, and now extend what we have in the well-established CSC meetings, extend that out now to mental health for all of our children. The staffing is, call it a part-time, board-certified child psychiatrist, it's 80%, so it's... The idea is that 10 to 4 will have a child psychiatrist onsite, and 9 to 5, we have our licensed mental health counselor, who's licensed by the state to provide mental health counseling. Then we have two administrative personnel. The one most people are not familiar with is our pediatric engagement specialist. Although it is an administrative position, it's somebody who's specifically trained at Zucker Hillside, our behavioral health hospital, who is trained in de-escalation, who's trained in engagement, so we don't allow any of our patients to be sitting in the waiting room alone, or with a parent, or disengaged, or where anxiety could be rising, where they say, I just want to get out of here, I'm uncomfortable. We have iPads, we have games, we have, you know, mood-stabilizing activities that we're trying to do, and then, of course, they're there to assess whether or not anxiety is rising, and if they have to get a clinician quicker than, you know, we expected. And then, of course, we have our front desk person, who's strictly administrative, but this is really Arianna's partner in ensuring that we're not just seeing the patients now, but we are bridging them to care. This is what we've often talked about, that warm transfer. We're looking to support the schools, that if you have a student in need and a family in need, subacute crisis, you're sending them off to us, we're partnering with you, and then we're working with our own community outside of Northwell, but our own partnerships with the community providers, which Arianna's been working diligently on, and the very local providers, to then hand them off for ongoing care. And the cost, obviously, is 1,000 variables. Right now, it's really depending on the amount of school districts that we have in the pilot year. I think you're aware of what the cost is. The site has opened as of Thursday. It's the star in the middle, 100 Merrick Road. Some of you might be familiar with it. It's Dr. Senna and Dr. McCarthy's primary care office. It's at the end, it's a separate entrance, we have a wall going up in between, just to have the feel of two separate services, but it is that location, if you're familiar with it, right across from King Cullen on Merrick Road. The circles are the school districts surrounding it that we're currently engaged with. I said the hours. We do service only patients... Initially, the goal is to service patients only within the district, that's 5 through, ideally 18, but we know the school district does take care of students up until the age of 21 in some cases, so that would be part of this. And we say students of the district, because we're very clear it's not of the school. So, if a student in your district is attending a parochial school in the area, a private school, a shaman, or whatever, they would absolutely be part of this. We do look at this, we think the most success for this program is gonna be a partnership between us, the schools, and the parents and the family. However, we don't want the schools to ever be a barrier in this, only in the sense that if a student ever felt that they didn't want to tell their guidance counselor what was going on, maybe they thought it was gonna impact their, you know, chances of getting into college or their sacred transcript, you know, they are allowed to walk in off the street, but obviously, our goal would be to go through the PPS staff and partner with the district. And in our experience in Cohen's, most, like I said, almost, it's actually 40%, it was in November, now it's almost 50% of our referrals come from schools. Almost all of patients' parents are signing that HIPAA form and say, please talk to our schools. Like, they want the partnership with the schools, they want us to be able to communicate with the schools and to help kind of form the plan. So, the future of mental health, obviously, we're in a mental health crisis across the country. It's certainly not unique to Long Island. What Northwell is doing, we have school-based systems, we have integrated primary care. You know, the idea, this is the pilot site, it's exciting, it's innovative, we feel really passionate about it, behind it, we feel like we're gonna help a lot of kids, but our goal was to be able to kind of pinpoint four of these across the Long Island. Any more than that, I feel like we're not really doing our job and only doing the crisis management, but a big piece of this is to integrate in the schools, to integrate in our primary care offices, and be able to help all our students and children from every facet of their life. So, that's all we have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, you mentioned the cost, but I don't think that we put that out there. So, Dr. Leahy, do you want to discuss that? I know, are you still waiting on other districts to decide if they're interested?
No. No, we're opened up based on the districts that have already signed contracts. The fee at this point is $55,000 per year per district, which is really an incredible price tag for the services that will be provided. We had some help from state government to try to subsidize and find monies for this type of a pilot clinic, and that has really helped us out and actually reduced the initial proposal almost twice. That's somewhere around $90,000 was the original cost of this. So, it would be $55,000 for the year for Rockville Center, should we join this clinic.
I'm gonna open it up to questions from the board first, and then we'll do the public second.
Hi, Gina. Nine to five, anything happen to the school? They will be put in an ambulance to go to the clinic? How does that work?
So...
I shouldn't say they.
Yeah, yeah.
A student would be put... How would they get to the clinic?
Yeah. So, there are some instances where an emergency room would still need to be utilized. There are situations in terms of if a student is discovered to be self-injuring and the cut needs medical attention, they would be routed to an emergency room. If a student is expressing, you know, having odd bizarre behavior that might need like an MRI or some brain imaging, we would not be able to do that at our setting, that would be also routed to the emergency room. However, in cases where the parent would need to be in attendance for the urgent care visit to be completed, so I wouldn't be able to see a student that's just brought in from an ambulance, they would need to have the parent pick them up and bring them to our clinic. But in instances where an emergency room is necessary, we are actually working with the Northwell EMS to have a streamlined service so that we would ensure them space at our Cohen's pediatric emergency room, which is the only pediatric emergency room in the region that's separated from the adult section. And then, we would also have close follow-up as well as access to the documentation and the assessment that was completed in the emergency room.
So, that a parent needs to be...
A parent does need to be in attendance, correct.
And if not, if the parent's not available or accessible, that student would be taken to the hospital?
If 911 is called, then a student would be taken to a hospital, correct.
But if a student was in duress here at school and Mom and Dad were unavailable in the city, however, would we send, take an ambulance, put them in an ambulance and send them to...
I think it's dependent on the situation. If it was a situation where we were worried about the danger to the child themselves or to somebody else, then an immediate action might have to be taken to transport them to an emergency setting. But if it was a situation where our PPS staff could be here waiting for parents to arrive, which happens all the time, you know, frankly, then we would then just hold them in the school until the parents arrived, and then they would bring them to the clinic.
The other thing with this model, you're not alone in making that decision, right? So, if the PPS staff is concerned, Mom, many of our parents, you know, work in the city, they can call us and say, listen, this is what's going on. We can say, listen, this can wait till tomorrow morning. Call Mom, tell her we'll see you first thing in the morning, 9:00 AM, or at the end of the day, whatever works for them. Or they may say, this can just get to the emergency room, I'm gonna call ahead and let them know that you're coming.
Because we'll be dealing with, you know, both acute crises, but also some chronic issues. This is just another level of resource and a really pretty strong level of support that could be put in for these really persistent and chronic cases of, you know, school avoidance, depression, anxiety, and it's not intended to be a place where a student or families would receive treatment for prolonged periods of time, but it's intended to create support for these families and a direction and security until they can have a firm treatment plan in place, which would be extremely helpful. I mean, the PPS staff is really excited about the possibility of having this support, the day-to-day ability to call a psychiatrist just to bounce cases off of them. So, this is really something that's very different and will really put that really another level, a roof and a foundation on our PPS program.
If there is any question by the PPS staff or any other staff at the school as to which level of care is to be determined, we are available throughout the entire school day for consultation. So, absolute worst-case scenario, a PPS staff has a kid in their office, they're not really sure, do I need to call 911, or can this be something that the parent can pick up and bring to the urgent care down the street? Then they can call me, I can do a consultation with the PPS staff and discuss with the parent as well, as long as there's a consent signed, to be able to advise them appropriately.
You mentioned the different districts and the priority that Rockville Center students get. What does that look like? So, nobody from the street, you're saying, kind of walks in, this is not a typical urgent care situation?
Correct.
It's through priority. So, what does the priority look like for our students? And how does that, or does that not happen after 5 o'clock with Cohen's as a larger entity? Is there any priority there after 5?
So, the priority during the day is that it's not open. In fact, we have to stop, we keep calling it urgent care because it's an easy model, it's what we're familiar... It's not really an urgent care, we've started to kind of change the naming of it. It's the partnership. So, it's really only open right now to the patient, to the students within that district. So, there's no scheduling of appointments unless it were for a student in the district, and it's only walk-in for those seven districts, or five, or six, however we wind up with. After hours, we'll have an on-call service that should somebody have an urgent need after hours, that they would be able to... We are flagged, like all of Zucker, Cohen's, our psychiatry, our pediatric service line, everybody, I mean, this is reason to a level, to the CEO of our institution, everybody knows about this program right now, that if you're identified, then we're gonna triage as necessary. Now, does that mean you show up in the ER and you're like, I'm from Rockville Center, and you're scooting right in? No, realistically, no. The medical side of the ER is very different than behavioral health, but the good news is in our behavior, in the urgent, in the emergency room for our behavioral health services, I think, whatever you're saying...
We share the same psychiatrist. We share the same psychiatrists that are in the emergency room.
Patients are basically, for behavioral health, whether you're within the district or not, you're immediately routed to a psychiatrist. You know, all other emergency rooms, you have to be evaluated, I mean, before discharge, you have to be evaluated by pediatrician, that's a law, but in all other emergency rooms, you have to be evaluated by a medical doctor first, then they call for a consult, that's all your weight there after you get in, and then the psychiatrist comes, and again, they're only saying whether or not you need to be admitted or not. In our emergency room, the thing that's unique, which wouldn't be specific to these districts, it's for everyone, is that if you come in with a behavioral health need, you're immediately triaged to the psychiatrist that's waiting for you, so you're immediately seen, and then, of course, the medical doctor needs to sign off on discharge. But, so after hours, I wouldn't necessarily say it's a priority, that's just our typical workflow, but during the day, it's really only available right now to the school districts who are signed on.
Well, to add on to that, I do think the difference is that if a student comes from Rockville Center and ends up in the emergency room at Cohen's due to being after hours, that they, we will be notified, I will have access to the documentation the next morning, and we can even schedule follow-up at our clinic with the psychiatrist that might as well have seen them in the emergency room the previous night before. So, we will still have that close follow-up, or if the school is notified, sometimes a parent will bring a kid to school the next day and tell the staff, hey, I was in, you know, the emergency room last night with my kid, then the PPS staff will know to notify us, and then I can even reach out to the parent, reach out to the patient, and assist them with scheduling the follow-up to make sure that we are able to bridge that care and keep a closer eye on the kids than anybody being discharged from an emergency room in any other circumstance.
And how do parents pay for the care? Is there co-pays? Is it insurance-related? How does that work for a family?
Yeah, it is fee-for-service, so it's all through the partnership, the school districts, you're paying for access, that access to a child psychiatrist and the other personnel Monday through Friday, nine to five, but then, once the child comes in to receive services, it goes through your typical insurance route of fee for service. We're probably not gonna be collecting co-pays, we're certainly not doing that now, and even if we did, if you didn't have the money on you to pay the co-pay now, that by law, we do have to bill, but we can bill later, but it is a fee-for-service model where we charge the insurance company.
What happens if the school sends somebody and they are not insured, or they don't... You probably don't take everybody's insurance?
We do, actually.
Oh, you do?
We take all insurance. I think there's one insurance right now of New York City. Yeah, we take, there's, I want to say Metro Plus, but it's a New York City insurance that we don't take, but we take all major insurances. If someone doesn't have insurance, then we work with our social workers to help them get insurance, because, you know, important piece of this program is not, we are not assuming the ongoing care. We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have capacity to do that. It's really to bridge care. So, if somebody doesn't have insurance, we're not gonna be able to bridge them, because, you know, most providers are requiring insurance to see patients. So, our goal would be to help them get insurance, and we have the social work staff to do that. I mean, that's the nice thing about partnering with a large organization, is we have a ton of resources. And then, of course, like any other hospital, we have a sliding scale fee, we have charity care that you can apply for, but regardless, when they come in that initial visit, that's not really the time that we're gonna be figuring that out. We're gonna treat and evaluate the patient, and then...
You're not gonna try anyway.
No, absolutely. Not if you're part of this collaborative.
What, you know, most people, I think, would think, if something happened at night, they would go to South Nassau. What happens to that connection? Is that something you can bridge also? Is that something you can bridge also?
So we're actually, we're in communication with Numic and South Nassau. We can't assume responsibility for what other hospitals are going to, how they're going to engage with us. But we are putting the knowledge out there to these other hospitals. We are meeting with community resources. We have gone to various clinics to meet with their staff members as well, to notify them of our service. So not only they can expedite our referrals on an outpatient basis, but if there is an instance where one of our children ends up on one of their emergency rooms, that they would be able to notify us and let us know. So the hope is obviously that they would let us know, but we also foresee the collaboration with the schools to say, hey, one of my kids was at Numic last night. And then by all means, we can have the parent sign consent with the school, we can have, you know, retrieve the assessment from them and then we can also continue to do the follow-up with the child after that.
Do you foresee doing some of that, those waivers or consent ahead of time with students? Like, you know, as part of the health record when we, you know, start the year? Or is that something like on an as-needed basis? So in other words, we have, we do have a parent stuck in the city and we can't get to them. My worry would be, how on that, on that spot could we get that consent to help this child until mom or dad gets there? Is it something we could consider incorporating into our, you know, longer-term health proxy?
It's, it's an excellent point. And actually, I'm going to go back to legal to see about that. Behavioral health privacy laws are a little bit different than medical. So I'd have to see if like one blanket consent covers it all, I'm not sure. But it's definitely something I want to take back. You know, it would be difficult because I think, and I'll let Ariana speak too better, but I think the parent is a big part of the interview process. It's usually we have, you know, the, the child and the parent together, the parent separately, the child separately, back together as a team. So it'd be a little bit difficult. But certainly I appreciate the need for wanting your child to be able to get some urgent care while you're on your way home. So that's a good point I'll bring back.
I mean, if the child is above 18 and still part of the district, we will absolutely see the, the patient, they can consent to treat themselves. But really, the hope is that the parent will be involved in the treatment, that they will be able to attend the assessment, as I do retrieve a ton of necessary information. Sometimes the kids don't know or don't remember if they've ever been in treatment before or they don't know, like, oh, I used to go see this doctor, but I don't remember if that was a therapist or not. So really, the parents will have valuable information. I mean, we can definitely look into that. I, I, we didn't really even think of that before. But the consent to treat is usually signed by the parent same day upon the visit.
So I, I just, no matter what happens at, at the school, if there was an incident, except if it pertained to a medical, you know, whatever, a medical need, someone would have access to the clinic?
Absolutely. The whole school day.
The only other caveat with that is if anyone's concerned about safety. So if there was a very aggressive student, typically the protocol is call 911. Once 911 is called and an ambulance is called, they have to go to Numic. We can't, I mean, there's very specific rules in Nassau County where they can't come to us. But if, if, you know, if 911 isn't called, if a parent can take them and come to us and if it is a question, by the way, once 911 is called, the option of going to Cohen's is no longer an option, they have to go to Numic. So, and that's a Nassau County thing. We've been working with our EMS to say, listen, if the school calls you, if the parent is there, if the parent says, I want them to go to Cohen's, not Numic, and we have, they said, if a psychiatrist signs off on that, we're okay with that. Well, we're your psychiatrist. So you can call us and say, here's a situation and EMS, if they have our sign-off and the parent's agreeable, that they will take them to Cohen's and not to Numic. And back to New, before, South Nassau, you know, is owned by Mount Sinai, so we, we have a relationship with them, but nothing more than just, you know, provider to provider. But Numic, we do have an affiliation with and we do, we provide a lot of services, contract a lot of services for Numic, psychiatry's being one of them. So our psychiatry department's actually helping to build their child and adolescent psychiatry program. So we do have a closer relationship with them. Not that I'm saying that that's where, you know, ideal setting for a child who's in need, but certainly we're able to kind of navigate that relationship a little bit easier.
Just one more question. If somebody comes in and needs that kind of urgent, you know, immediate help and doesn't have somebody to then go back to, what's the referral process in finding them, maybe a longer-term doctor to work with?
So in addition to the assessments that I conduct, while during the patient's visits, I am also acting as their care manager in essence. We, like I said, we have been going out and into the community, meeting with various clinics, South Shore Guidance, New Horizon Counseling Center, Hispanic Counseling Center, as well as outreach in private practitioners. And we will do our, make our best effort to make sure that the child is linked. If we are initiating medication, we do have the child psychiatrist that's available for several follow-ups because that usually tends to be the bottleneck. You know, a kid might be able to link with a therapist, but it's really finding a child psychiatrist or finding somebody willing to prescribe the medication ongoing, that tends to be the stop. So we are able to see the child for ongoing treatment, just to kind of bridge them over to that care. In the relationships that we are creating with the community resources, they also respect our referrals as an, our urgent referral. So they are committed to seeing our kids within five to seven business days for an intake appointment. And they are also able to use our assessment as a tool to initiate their own treatment. So that's really like the golden ticket to getting a kid into treatment is if there was a previous assessment completed, then they have all of that information to base their intake assessment off of, especially if medication is initiated, they have the previous psychiatrist as a consultative service. So they're really able to have that warm handoff as opposed to a child kind of being thrown into a clinic waiting, you know, they might be linked with a therapist, but then the psychiatrist doesn't have an appointment for another month and a half and then the kid is suffering in the meantime.
Is there a tie, you know, if the school sends somebody to the clinic, does the school get, I guess, not the whole story, but part of what's happening and a follow-up?
So that's really what's unique to this collaboration is that once the consent is signed on the parent's end with this, both the school and us, we do have that open communication. And I'm able to continue follow-up with the social worker or the school psychologist that sent the child over. And we're able to collaborate clinically on what the best appropriate treatment would be for the child. So whether that be, hey, we don't have the capacity right now to get the kid with a therapist, would you be willing to take on this child just for kind of like a weekly therapy, just for monitoring while they're, we're getting them linked to treatment? And then we can update each other on results ongoing. They can continue to see our psychiatrist while they're going to therapy at your school. And then we can continue the follow-up with the community referral source. So that's something that's even unique to our clinic as opposed to the one that we have at Cohen's main campus. We're getting kids from all over the region, from Suffolk, from Staten Island, from Brooklyn, from the Bronx. We get people from all over and all of those families are really service discharged. They do have the same respect of the urgent care referrals, but, and we do certainly follow-up with schools in that setting as well. But we're specifically tailored to working with your school district and being able to personally follow-up. Like we've had, over the past week, PPS staff from the clinics that have already signed on, they've come to visit the schools, Dr. Leahy's come to visit the clinic as well. And we're able to personally get to know each of your PPS staff by name, by face, and be able to connect with those kids and know them per, on a personal level, which we don't get the same availability in an emergency room or another setting.
Does Cohen, we're, we're, we are always looking for programs to come into the school, you know, assemblies or break, breakdowns. Do you have, I guess, you know, an assortment of programs that you might be able to help the school district get at little or no cost?
We do. We actually have a ton of free programs that a lot of districts use, not everyone's aware of. Most recently, I'm involved in our Cohen's Ambassador Program, which is a peer-to-peer bullying program that we've put out to South Nassau. So now everyone knows in community outreach, if anything goes out to the community, they have to go through me because immediately our seven school districts that are signed on get, get kind of first dibs at that. If this is a program you're interested in, you're immediately signed on. It's free and open to everyone, you guys just get prioritized. It's that you have to make sure that you reach out to Rockville Center to have them involved in it. We have everything from sex education to anti-bullying, to social media. We have a lot of community outreach that we're, digital parenting, we do parent universities. As you know, Dr. Foyer was our keynote speaker at the Mental Health Summit. These are just the type of typical things that we do in the community anyway. But with that partnership, you kind of get first dibs at it. And you're in constant communication with us that when, you know, part of this collaborative too is having an advisory committee. And so having all the superintendents or PPS directors or whoever the, the district identifies, sitting down with us on a quarterly basis to say, you know, obviously patient de-identified information, but what are the trends that we're seeing? What is the utilization? What are the data points? The first meeting is going to be that. How are we measuring success of this program? What outcomes are we, are we looking to achieve and how? And, and that's data on both our sides. You guys need to provide us, so what, what are your school absenteeism rates? And, you know, how many referrals are you making? We're then going to say, we track every single patient that comes through, what district are you from, what school are you from? So that way, we're coming together to identify trends to hopefully to change, not just the outcomes of the kids, but to look at curriculum, to look at programs and to look at what other community services we can filter in here to help you guys.
We've also been in discussion, because we do actually have a, a college partnership at Zucker Hillside Hospital. And we would be in discussion with the schools because summers tend to be a slower season, the kids are happier when there's no school. So we were looking into actually having some startup programs to transition the kids from their senior year into college, being able to prep them on coping skills, do a refresher on things that they've learned in therapy, how to tolerate distress when they're, you know, living independently and when they're leaving home for the first time. So having that bridger program would specifically be for these school districts in this sort of like step-up model. So that's something that we've also been looking at.
In that sense, you're looking at students with the background of, of depression or something like that? Or you, is that something you would offer to anybody?
Well, mostly, I would probably, and I mean, this is just something that's like in very beginning discussions. I would probably look at the kids who were previous patients at our clinic and maybe reaching out to them to kind of have like a refresher before they start attending school. But this is something that's, you know, we're really at the service of the school districts as well. Because of having that close connection, we're able to collaborate and model, what does your school need specifically? Even though all of the school districts that we're looking at are within a small radius of each other, each district has very unique needs and we're able to tailor our presentations, our programs to be able to jumpstart for your specific district and what your kids want and what they need to help support them in the community. Whether that be like a boot camp over summer to kind of teach them preparation and coping skills, or whether that be an intermediate, like over winter break, something that might be helpful for them. We can work with the PPS staff in developing those programs and I'd be more than happy to come attend and present. And I know Vera goes all over and does presentations. So we'd be more than happy to serve the districts like that.
That's, that's a big at-risk group going off into college.
Yeah, absolutely.
For, for any student, it's difficult. So it might be something we could talk about to get a program for everybody.
Before I was working at Cohen's, I was at the Adult Crisis Center at Zucker Hillside Hospital where we would see a ton of 18-year-olds that were just starting off in college, coming home for Thanksgiving break, coming home for winter break, might, something's off with my kid, I'm not sure where to go or what happened. And they're completely withdrawn, they're completely different than when their parents sent them off to college for something that was supposed to be an incredible experience. And if we're able to intervene before that and equip our kids with the knowledge to feel like they're confident enough to approach such a huge life change and transition, then we wouldn't even need to have their approach or have them end up in a crisis situation at adulthood where they're really supposed to be flourishing.
Better to help them before they need the help.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's proven across the board. We even have early intervention programs for early treatment of psychosis at Zucker Hillside where we have the target group for early adulthood, late adolescence, where when kids are first experiencing psychotic symptoms, including like bizarre, odd behavior, that we're able to intervene for early treatment, which really decreases any succession of psychotic symptoms, any progression of possible schizophrenia down the line. So really, early intervention is the key into no longer relapse, no, lowering the rate of rehospitalization, decreasing emergency room visits. Like we want to catch the kids when they're in that in-between, when there may be like, I'm not really 100% sure if I want treatment or not, but I might step into my guidance counselor's office just to have a chat with them. I might approach my school psychologist because I just kind of want to bounce something off of them or something happened at school and I really just want to have that close relationship and just maybe bring my friend to the guidance counselor because they really need something, but like I'm going to sit there and listen to them during session. A lot of our kids will sit and observe before they act, before they tell a teacher. So if the, before they tell a parent, I'm sorry. So if the teacher or the PPS staff notice, then they can give us a call and be like, we're going to keep an eye on this kid, I'm going to maybe contact the parent and then I will personally be available for that consultation, for that service to the parents and the families, which no other treatment facility will do.
Any other questions from board members? I'd like to open the microphone for questions for our guests, specifically about Northwell. If you come up to the mic, please mention your name and your address.
Hi, Melissa Servilla, 175 Linden Street. So you were touching on this toward the end. When would someone age out from the pediatric adolescent behavioral urgent care? Is it graduation day if someone lives in the district? Is it their, you mentioned if they're 18?
Yeah, so it's typically 18 or when they graduate. But we know the district does have students up until the ages of 21. So it would be when you are no longer considered a student of the district.
Any other questions? Thank you both so very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Leahy as well. So Dr. Johnson, just to be clear, we will not take action on this contract?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, that, that what's involved here is a contract with Northwell. The board needs to ratify and then ultimately sign that contract. While we're not looking at doing it tonight, I think this is an opportunity for us and the community to get familiar with exactly what the terms and conditions were. And I really appreciate the detail in which they were able to articulate the services that we would be involved in contracting with them, where we took and moved on this. So either at the next meeting or the following one, we'll be in a position then to have the Board of Education ratify a contract. We'd like to move quickly on this so that we can gain access to these services as soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
As soon as that contract's signed, then you, we would have access to services?
Yes.
We're moving on to our policies. We have a couple of policies out. 6480 is our tutoring professional services. Like to thank Steve Goodsett for coming from Ingram and Smith. I forgot to mention earlier, it's sixth season and trustee Liz Dion is not able to make it. That's why she's not here tonight. So Steve is familiar with the work we've been doing regarding this policy. Actually, all three have been being helped along by Ingram and Smith and we thank you for that. So Steve, I'm not sure if there's anything that you wanted to point out that may have changed from the last time. I think you had spoken with Chris Powers after our last meeting, trying to just finalize some, some language.
Yeah, so good, good evening, everybody. So the policies from the last meeting really changed more in the lines of just making it flow better. We put some more examples in there. So for example, if you go to the coaching section on 6480, number two, that's more, that's much more detailed than it was before. I mean, the, the first version of this agreement was a little, I'd say clunky, but that's not really the word I want to use. It's, it wasn't as clear and it led to a lot of confusion. And this pretty much sets forth the situations in which people cannot do outside tutoring, outside coaching, or outside music instruction. And if, I'll go back if there's any individual questions throughout. But with regards to the forms, we just restructured the form, the format. The previous form had the superintendent of schools sign above where it was approved or denied. And now we just made it more consistent so anyone can see this on file and they can understand what the action is taking, whether, when, who is the teacher, what are they doing, what are the services, who are the students, and whether it's been approved or denied by the superintendent of schools. Lastly, the 6110, the code of ethics, there really weren't many changes from the last one. I think there was a few minor changes in the gift section in A, in which, I'm just trying to find it exactly where, where we made the change. I believe in the second line, it just said, we had, we added individual group or entity. And that's really the only change that was made to 6110 between the last, between the last meeting and this current one. meeting and this current one.
So I know we had, this has been ongoing, we've had Chris Powers come, and now Steve, and we've moved things along kind of at a slow pace. My recommendation would be to hold 6480 and 6480F at stage two. We did create an athletic advisory committee, as we mentioned at the last meeting, and I think I would like to see the input from the people that would be at that table for these policies before we move them forward. So my recommendation would be to hold them at stage two until we set that first meeting up. If board members agree, then we would leave those right where they're at.
Hundred percent.
And review them in a more advisory setting.
I have a question, point of order. I would like to speak about these policies. Would you like me to wait?
Yes, you could do that during the mic time, especially because I'm not moving them forward, so it's not going to impact us, you know, moving them or approving them or anything like that for the moment. So we're going to hold those where they are. In terms of 6110, are there any questions from board members regarding that? As Steve pointed out, very small changes. And again, we would not be voting on this policy, so that we would be voting to move it forward, so that we would be approving it the next time. So we still would have that opportunity to make a change and hold it before approving it. Does anybody have any questions about 6110? Board members in favor of moving it forward then, for approval at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yep, okay, so we'll move that one forward. And again, we'll hold 6480 and 6480F. Okay. Moving on to public hearing, the district-wide safety plan. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Each year, we are now required to adopt a district-wide school safety plan. It doesn't come to us without a good deal of planning and opportunity for a variety of sources to participate in providing input. This takes place usually in the fall, and it comes to the Board of Education early in the new calendar year. The plan actually has two parts. Part one is the one that the Board of Education can share with the public, and is in fact what we will in fact be considering for adoption this evening. The other is a school-wide safety plan, and there is one for each of our facilities in the school district. Those are required by law to be retained as confidential. The school has a plan, but we are not permitted by law to share that with the public, or in fact to engage in conversation here at a public board meeting about the contents of each of those plans. So I'm not sure if there is anything that the Board of Education would like to discuss, but certainly, we are prepared to do that, although this is the result of a good deal of discussion, well in advance of the commitment of this to writing and consideration for action.
And just to be clear, we have a committee that works on this, right? So I know John O'Shea is one of our board members who says on it, so is Liz Dion. John, is there anything that came up through the meetings that was different, that we should be pointed to? Because I know a lot of this is kind of rolling, we roll along with new things that happen, and we incorporate new things as we go. Is there anything to note?
Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. It's just a little, little change here, a little change there. There are 15 or so people, representatives from all our buildings, that get together, I don't know, four or five times, and we go through it all. So this is, this is the end, the end product of all that.
Dr. Leahy, anything you want to add to it, or no?
I think it, some of the changes that are reflected in the last couple of years reflect the requirements for us to be concerned again about mental health awareness and allotment plans and several changes to the law in terms of just the safety of kids in their emotional, emotional way.
Would signing the contract with Northwell impact this plan at all? Anything that needs to be added in here?
No.
Anything else? No, because it's more of a general sense, right?
What it's really designed to do is to make both students and faculty far more aware of the behavior in individuals, as it may or may not deteriorate, and therefore put us in a position to make recommendations, and therefore, Northwell would be a location where we could provide, get services for these kids, but in the event. So yes, the plan is changing, and it's moving in that direction.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for the work on the committee as well.
Now, it stays out for how long, Robert?
Thirty days.
So 30 days, if you have a chance, if you have an opportunity to read and you have a question, you give district feedback on it, and gives us the opportunity to change it if you see a drastic need, or any need, actually, right? We would think about it.
Okay, we'll move on to old business. Just had mentioned, just a few minutes ago, about last meeting, we talked about starting an athletic advisory committee, and an email had gone out to the district as a whole. So just wanted to talk about that. We have, we have basically committees for everything that happens in the district, except for athletics, and felt that it was a great way to bring various people to the table. We are looking at policies that we think we really need input from multiple people on, that's why we're holding them. So we're very excited about this advisory. We have a lot of people have interest in signing up, and we thank everybody who did send in an email for that, so we're going to be compiling that. The committee is really going to be run with, you know, strict bylaws in place, as we do all of our committees. We're not looking to create an opportunity for people to come and bring athletic grievances to the table. We still support the protocols in place by the school district, and that is student athletes going to coaches, coaches going to the athletic director, and so on up. So we still support those protocols. The committee is really to bring some of these issues in a safe forum, where we can get immediate information from the people that are impacted, and it's made up of the athletic director, booster club president, members of the community, coaches, administrators, board members. So we're really pleased to add that to our list of committees, and we are looking forward to starting that. So we'll be compiling that list. If you are interested, you can apply to our district clerk, Jackie Wong, and we will get in touch with everybody shortly about that. We're hoping to launch that in the next month or so.
Tara, I had some people come to me, and you did not get any email to...
I heard that as well.
Yeah. You didn't get an email acknowledging your email to the district on this matter.
Right.
But we will reach out to everybody who has...
We had only sent it out a few days ago, so we're still in the process. So if you did apply, if you're not sure if your application got in, you can definitely check with Mrs. Wong. Otherwise, if you can give us a little time, we're still compiling, and we will get back to everybody, everybody who has sent in an email.
We will send back whether or not they were on the committee.
Right. We will answer every person that wrote to us. Okay?
Thank you.
Also, we have a group of parents that have been meeting with Dr. Johnson and Dr. Pelletieri about enrichment, and I wanted to mention that we do have a stellar presentation coming up at one of our next board meetings, which would be in February. So we hope that you'll be interested in coming to that. If there's anything you want to add, or we're good, okay. So we'll be looking forward to that in the next meeting. And the superintendent search is still ongoing. We have, we'll be looking to finalize that process shortly, and when we have an announcement to make, we will definitely do that in public. Again, we're looking to have our person in place on July 1st, 2020, so we're still on target for that date. And I think that's it for old business for now, so we'll move on to opportunity for superintendent. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you very much. I just would like to wish certainly all members of the board a Happy New Year, and everybody in the community the same wishes. Hopefully off to a very good start in this new year. I would also like to just mention the fact that, well, not mention it, but also congratulate the covert kids who came tonight. They were wonderful, certainly well-prepared, well-versed in what they were going to say, so we thank them very much for, again, enriching the school district, providing us with the opportunity to know what's going on in our elementary, and also congratulate the incredible work of our athletic program. They do a fabulous job, and the kids, as you saw tonight. I think the proudest moment for me is the fact that the Sportsmanship Award is so important to our staff and to our kids, and it is reflected by recognition by both the county and the state of the scholar athlete and the sportsmanship that's exhibited by our kids on a regular basis in all the contests in which we are involved. Last thing I just wanted to mention really has to do with the budget process. We will begin that very shortly, and I would encourage those who are interested in the programs that we have here for next year to join us and to join the Board of Education as we deliberate and consider the allocation of resources that currently support our, I think, wonderful programs here in Rockville Center, and we certainly hope to continue to do that. So that will end in March, but certainly towards the end of January and through the month of February, we will be engaging not only one another, but also asking the community for their input on, at each of the meetings in which we discuss the budget, and we would encourage, although we have not gotten a whole lot of participation in recent years, we would encourage the public to join us and participate. That's it.
Okay, opportunities for board members. Mr. O'Shea?
Happy New Year, everybody. I'd like to congratulate all our athletes. I've always contended that the athletic program here in our schools, you know, all the way along, just create a better place for our children to grow up and learn, and learn how to be team members and work together, and it just makes Rockville Center special, because we can do that, along with our clubs and all that. But tonight, we had our stellar athletes come before us, and the achievements that they, they make in, at a high school level is pretty phenomenal in my, in my mind. The only thing, only other thing I'd like to bring up, I've had a lot of people reach out to me, is about anti-Semitism. Education is the only way we will ever stem anti-Semitism, bigotry, prejudice, and things like that. And people have asked me, what are we doing on a regular basis in Rockville Center to educate our children, to teach our children, I'm going to say, the right and the wrong? And I'm going to reach out to Mr. Pelletieri to just explain in a brief sense where, what we do regularly to fight this.
John, thank you very much. Southside High School, Southside Middle School, are the entire district really focused on being inclusive. We just recently, in Southside High School and the middle school, worked with the Anti-Racism Project, which is, birthplace is right here in Rockville Center. We've done six trainings for all of our staff at the secondary level, that's both middle school and high school, to open up those conversations around race. We've worked with Liberty Project, the Liberty Partnership, for over 22 years, which works with our students. We are a no-place-for-hate school in the middle school and the high school. The middle school thoughtfully purchases books. They're working on a book called The Book Thief, which is, pertains to the Holocaust, and we have conversations in social studies and ELA classes around this. Our Sanford Harmony Program talks about inclusivity all the time. All of our students being in the same classes together, because we are not a tracked program, I think allows for us to work together as a, as a community. It's something that's at the forefront of what we do. The high school is part of Project LEAD, which is a program that works with students. It's actually learning empathy, acknowledging diversity. Southside High School, Jericho High School, and Uniondale High School, students working together, meeting together, having open discussions. There's an equity committee here at Southside High School, staff, students, working together again to open those dialogues. It's something that we have worked with the Anti-Defamation League, Erase Racism has recognized Dr. Johnson for his leadership in this area. It's very important to us. It's something that we have put resources towards and invested for our community, our students, and our teachers in.
Thank you, Dr. Pelletieri. That's the only way we'll correct the wrongs in the world, if we educate our children. And we, I believe, we always take that opportunity and try to do the best with the kids of the community. Thank you.
Mary? Okay, Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome back. Thank you to the covert students. It was awesome to see their pride and their passion and their work, and as a teacher, I was happy to hear they were motivated to work even over winter break, which was nice. Congrats to the student athletes. It's always such a fun night to be able to honor them, and I'm always in admiration of their hard work and diligence, both in the classroom and out in their various activities, on the fields, in the gym, on the track, so congratulations, and in the pool, and on the golf course. I think I hit all of them. So congratulations to all of them and their proud parents. And the Winter Ace Program kicked off last Saturday, so I was happy to be there with my little guy. And just such a variety of course offerings, again, just such an amazing turnout, and really happy to be part of that, so thank you to all that worked on that. So that's it.
Dido, dido, dido. Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks again for the covert. It's so fun. That's the best part of the night, is getting to see the students. I see many coaches here that stayed through the night, so thank you. And just as much as we celebrate the athletes, we celebrate the people behind them that push them and really train them and give them the skills to get to where they need to be, and I think that's something that we really pride ourselves here in Rockville Center on, so thank you, thank you. And I think that was it for tonight. So thank you all. Have a good year.
A real year, yes.
Yes.
2020. Yeah, congratulations to all the student athletes and the coaches. Thank you all for coming. Just a few things to add. Dr. Johnson mentioned that we have budget season coming up, and one thing that we started doing from the board was starting to do mid-year facility reviews of each of the buildings, so we will be doing that again this year, visiting all the schools. And something new that we're doing this year is visiting all the PTA meetings upcoming in the end of January, beginning of February, so that if there's any concerns that people have ahead of budget season, or kind of as we're starting budget season, we can maybe have those conversations earlier. We normally come around again in April before the budget vote and try to answer any questions, but there was a feeling that there was some questions left going too late. So we will be kind of jumping around the district in the next couple of weeks to visit all the PTAs and the buildings, and we look forward to doing that. We thank the principals in advance for hosting us. One last plug, or not last, maybe two more, for the Ed Foundation Gala, which is coming up on March 28th, as Dr. Johnson is the sole recipient this year, and I sit on that committee and very proud of the work that they do. It's so important, it's, you know, for some people, look at it as a ticketed event, and it's a dinner, and it's a beautiful event, and we're so proud of Dr. Johnson for being the honorary. What I can say for the Ed Foundation is the work they do in this district is just phenomenal, and we're so grateful to them. Those dollars come back to our children in beautiful ways we show throughout the year. Dr. Audra Suruto is just a phenomenal president of that group, and we thank them for all the things that they do. So if you can support that gala on March 28th, we would love to see you there.
Tara, I can't believe that none of the three of us, we might be about to mention it. The sixth grade music concert last night, it was, we all have, sixth grade is our first time doing that, so that was really exciting.
Great job by all.
A great job by all. It really makes a difference when you see them go to sixth grade, and how great the band, the orchestra, the chorus sound, so kudos to the music department.
Yeah, and Dr. Zuar and his exhausting concert schedule.
Yes.
So we're going to open up the mic. Just as a reminder, we can't have any conversations at the mic regarding personnel, student, staff, or any member of the community, so please withhold from using any names at the microphone, except your own, which we would like you to use, your name and your address, please, when you come up to the mic. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Just got to be there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 please.
Oh, I apologize. Excuse me. Hi, Liz Walter, 28 Dorchester Road. Happy New Year. Thank you again for all your hard work. I'm here again to talk about American Sign Language and a Level One Spanish or French class at the hospital, at the high school. I've heard that, that you haven't had a lot of American Sign Language teacher applications, and I imagine it could be a challenge that you've had a hard time getting New York State certified teachers. And I was just thinking, you know, trying to do what you all do so well, and think outside the box, and think of how to fix this, and I thought about how, when the district decided that they needed evidence-based systematic reading instruction for different students in the district, that they didn't go outside to hire teachers with specific certifications. They took teachers inside the district and sent them for certification. So a cohort, as you know, a group of teachers was sent out to be certified in Wilson Fourth Edition Reading Certification a year or two ago. Similarly, I know prior to the genesis of the Pathways Program, a cohort of Gen Ed teachers was sent out and fast-tracked to get Special Ed certification, I think, which obviously benefited the Pathways Program, which is great. So I'm just thinking outside the box, and this might be a great way to, if you can't find someone at a district, to, I'm sure there's some young, hungry, foreign language teacher who would like to get another certification in American Sign Language, and I know you are all excellent at making things happen and doing things for different groups of students in the district. That's my first point. My second point is, you know, I know you also talked about ascertaining interest in Sign Language, and there's definitely must be community interest, because you have a club at the high school. The library has most recently started a program for elementary school students, so there's definitely community interest, and I think a great way to find out if there is interest at the high school would be to put it on the Course Selection Guide sheet, you know, that was just distributed about a month ago. And I know that you're going to say, well, we're not offering the class, so how can we put it on the Course Selection Sheet? But once again, if you have a high school student you know, just because you check off a box doesn't necessarily mean you're admitted to the class. I know there was a waitlist for Wood Design this year, and a waitlist for Intro to ACH this year. this year. So that's American Sign Language. So, and again, if it's not the way the district wants to go, okay, no problem. But again, Level 1 Spanish or French class would be a great plan, which, you know, might be more cost-effective than American Sign Language would benefit. The Gen Ed, the Special Ed population, I know our district policy is to exempt kids sometimes starting at the age of 11, which I've spoken about. I know it's not a decision to be made lightly, and rightfully so. But through my research, I've discovered that, you know, we do an exemption at age 11. Many other districts call, do a deferment. So in other words, the student is not taken off that track at age 11. They are deferred, and it's revisited when the student enters high school. So instead of being exempt and removing the child from the program, it's deferred, and it's revisited again in high school. And I know you have said that, well, any student could jump back into the program in high school, but again, I've said it before, and again, I'll say it again, I don't think any parent here with a Gen Ed or Special Ed student would want their student starting a brand-new foreign language at Level 3 when they're a year and a half away from the region's exam. It just doesn't seem fathomable to me for a Gen Ed student, and especially for a student with a language-based learning disability. And I don't see how that could be an effective instructional model for any student. I don't see how that could be a good fit for anyone, quite frankly. So I just wanted to mention some things that I thought would be possible options in how to fix it. And again, I know you all work very hard, and I know there's a lot of things going on, and I know this is not the only thing, but I think it is an important thing that could benefit many, many students in the district. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we do any sort of surveys to gauge interest, to Liz's point, instead of having to maybe put it on a Course Selection Guide to figure that out? Do we ever survey the kids, you know, when they're looking for courses at the upper grades?
Typically, that survey is done through offering it, and then if not enough kids sign up, that course is not offered. But it's a little bit of a chicken-and-egg thing, you know, the search for a certified, qualified teacher. Should 150 kids want to take Sign Language, and we don't have a teacher, we have a problem. So it's actually, of late, I'm going to be tentatively optimistic that I actually finally broke through. I have three resumes that look like they might be real, with upcoming grads from programs. They're way, way, way upstate, and we had to coax them down, but just recently, I've been able to ascertain more interest by, I don't want to say it's been my full-time job, but it's been, it's been kind of an ongoing trying to figure out where this could come from, from all of the local universities, all of the universities have programs across New York State. And I was just about to start to go into Connecticut, New Jersey, and other states, when I started to actually get a couple of leads from New York. So maybe in the next couple of months, we would be able, and that doesn't guarantee that those candidates are viable candidates, it just means that we have people that have American Sign Language certifications, which is a distinct certification from other languages. And in terms, we even had some internal people refer to us that have a capability in Sign Language, just don't have the certification. And I had some conversations with them about whether or not they would be interested in going back, much like our current vision teacher was a Special Ed teacher that went back on his own to get a vision certification. So we've got a lot of irons in the fire right now, and, but no decisions have been made on it either, you know, so.
I understand.
That's why it's a little bit of a chicken-and-egg thing, like, we got to move a couple footballs down the field and then get together and figure out where we are.
But I bet you could find a hungry teacher who might want to get that additional certification and a salary raise and all that kind of stuff by getting.
So far, no, but yeah, we're working on it.
Okay. And just one more quick comment, digression in regard to the mental health walk-in place, which sounds great, but your partner, I'm not sure what her name was, she had said that over the summer, it's a slow time because the kids are not in school. So I just think everyone should be mindful that a lot of these kids feel a lot of stress from school, so the school, the administration, should consider how that plays into student stress and anxiety. So I think that's a very important piece of the puzzle.
I like the piece that she said that they relate back to the school and can give advice to the school, but what they're seeing coming from our district in particular, that is an important piece versus going to an ER and we lose that connection. So it's a good point.
All right. Thank you so much.
Does the clinic close in the summer?
No.
No.
Will it be staffed all summer long? So at that point, can they come from home and go to the?
Yeah.
My point was just that kids are less stressed over the summer because they don't have the pressures of school. And that's important for the district to consider, every district, not just this district, but, you know, there's something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Frank Van Sant. I have two homes. One is 76 Tanyard Lane in Huntington, New York, but my second home is in these buildings, Rockville Center Public Schools. I'm the president of RVCTA. I used to be a coach for many years, and now as the president of RVCTA. I do feel an obligation to talk to everyone here. I feel a need to talk on behalf of the coaches, but also to reach out to community members. I really think that there's a high call for some old-fashioned communication and talking at this time, so that's my goal tonight. I want to start with an easy thing that I hope can all agree on. Kids do better when they have coaches who are teachers in their buildings. Your teacher-coaches have student teaching, teacher training, master's degree, teaching experience, they don't just have a coaching license. I'll give you an analogy. Anybody can get a driver's license, or almost anybody can get a driver's license, but judging from Sunrise Highway, not everybody should be driving. In-building, your teacher-coaches watch and monitor schoolwork getting done by student athletes. They monitor behavior, they monitor wellness, they communicate with other teachers. One teacher told me, if she has a problem with a kid in class, what does she do? She, all she needs to do is talk to the coach. End of problem. Your teacher-coaches initiate, and they foster special cases. Bluntly, there are kids on the periphery who do not have strong advocates at home. And the teacher-coaches connect to these kids, they advocate for them, and they change them for the betterment of everyone. In matters of impartiality and fairness, your teacher-coaches see the whole child, the whole picture of all their student-athletes. They look at attendance, they look at effort, they look at listening and coachability, they look at performance, they look at intangibles. Your teacher-coaches are not just focused on one child, I'm sorry, but frankly, the one child whose helicopter advocates are pushing and pulling on their behalf. Moreover, Rockville Center teacher-coaches go above and beyond all the time. Off-season, they have voluntary workouts, they have after-practice help sessions, there's team gear to order, there are team dinners, there are outings that are had, there's tireless and constant recruiting work that's done. I can't tell you all the ways that the coaches go above and beyond. The teacher-coaches always look to make a positive difference in the lives of their student-athletes, and not just the athletic portion, while making Rockville Center teams as competitive as possible. And Rockville Center does enjoy success. We've seen it tonight. There's a lot of success on our fields. In Rockville Center, we're really lucky. Why? Because most of our coaches are in our school buildings. That's not the case in every school district. They have specific sports knowledge and teaching expertise on the field, but the coaches are telling me, and I'm telling you, that they feel trusted and valued from 7:30 in the morning to 2:30 in the afternoon, but from 3 o'clock on, it's a different story. Coaches feel that their integrity is under attack, and you know, there have been some teachers, some coaches, good ones, who've sadly decided to walk away from it. Why? Because the pressures are too much. It's a tough environment. These things need to be said. In the present discussion of policy formations, coaches want to remind everyone of a policy that exists that's been far too often skirted. The Student-Athlete Contract calls for certain protocols regarding questioning coaching decisions. For example, in baseball, there are nine on the field; in basketball, five on the court; in soccer, 11 on the pitch. You get the idea. Team management calls for impartial and fair judgment. Your teacher-coaches want to remind you respectfully, remind everyone, questions of starting and playing time, or not starting, et cetera, should first be posed by the student-athlete firstly and directly to the coach. Failing satisfaction, parents should then contact the coach. In Rockville Center, coaches see far too many protocol line-cutters who go directly to an administrator first to investigate the supposed injustice done to their child. These should not be entertained, because it speaks to the seeking of insider favoritism and insider connectedness, and coaches, frankly, being bullied. This is neither fair to the coaches nor healthy for the kids. Folks, these are Rockville Center teacher-coaches, not a room full of Bobby Knights kicking over chairs on their way to television commercial contracts. Rockville Center teacher-coaches are highly-trained, reasonable people. Please trust that your coaches care about all the kids, not just the ones with the loudest parents. A second consideration, as you guys are thinking about these policies, coaches are concerned. Hope that these policies will accomplish the right things. Please realize, and this is sad to say for our school community, but the truth is that in some sports, the private clubs have supplanted the school teams as the source of scholarships. A college coach, for example, looking to recruit, would rather go to a private club showcase than a local Section 8 game in order to benefit from one-stop shopping, a chance to see fields full of All-Stars. Successful private teams at the top levels play against elite competition, the entire East Coast region, or national selections. The fact is that many families seek high levels of training privately for their kids. With this, not all club teams are equal in level, because the teams are super-competitive, they're free-agent markets, and the best players often look to the best club situations. Families make family commitments so that their athletes can work hard to make these teams and become trained on elite levels. And note, considering the obvious advantages a kid gets from private training over kids whose families can't afford or perhaps don't prioritize that training, no one would make a policy prohibiting families from choosing a private club option for their kids. In fact, many coaches tell me they often receive requests to accommodate private club scheduling demands in the school setting. Yet, despite that fact, many districts encourage club and school connections, but you're considering debarning coaches from private opportunities. Along with the reality of the private clubs comes another one. The private coaches, I'm sorry to say it, but the private coaches make far more money than their public school counterparts. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying a fact. It's not a sordid thing at all when a highly-trained teacher-coach looks to or is sought for those private positions. Club teams are not inherently, as some would have it, a pay-to-play scheme. Again, the fallacy in that thinking lies in the heretofore silent truth that the club teams in several sports outweigh the school teams. Your highly-trained coaches are highly-desirable in that environment. The club teams, frankly, are a different and separate universe. I'm going to leave you with this thought and one story. The thought, your teacher-coaches are on your side and are there for your kids. They are. This is the story. Years ago, when I coached JV baseball here, I had a kid trying out, a really nice kid, a great kid. He had one of the worst tryouts I've ever seen in my life. I'm sorry to say this, these years later, namelessly, this poor kid was awful. He could not hit the ball again and again and again and again. He couldn't make contact. I cut him. This is what did not happen. Parents didn't run straight to Dr. Johnson, work the board. Nobody threatened to sue me. They didn't run a multimedia campaign against me. What happened was, the kid talked to me. We followed up, me, the kid, the parents. I told them that he had to work on his hitting. I'd love to see him come back. And guess what? The kid came back, and he not only made the team as a sophomore, but he became, he became my hardest worker, he became a co-captain. Great success story. Loved every second of it. And in all this, the kid proved me not wrong. The kid proved me right. He lacked an identifiable skill. I, who played college baseball, and baseball all my life, and coached for years, could identify that skill and tell the kid to work on it, and the kid came back better. Please consider the honest integrity of your teacher-coaches in this whole picture, not just in one isolated event. Please consider that good policies are already in place. Please consider the assets and the successes that are at stake. Your Rockville Center teacher-coaches are the least biased of your coaching sources. But I'm telling you, morale is low, and micromanagement will push your in-building people Do you really want self-interested, non-educators running your teams? We're at a crossroads. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else would like to come to the mic? Frank, you're a tough act to follow, apparently. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? As listed, we have special meetings. We have special meetings, December 2nd, 6th, 7th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. A motion, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I have a motion to approve financial reports as listed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve receipt of financial reports as listed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For items for action, I'd first like to make a motion to remove the calendar vote from the list, so we'll be removing item C. Can I have a motion to remove the item?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve items for action, everything but C, all the way, let's see, all the way through H plus the addendum. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have questions just regarding, Noreen, the approval resolution pertaining to the independent evaluator hardship waiver application. What exactly is that?
Well, hardship waiver is our ability to get the district exempted from evaluators from different buildings, to have to evaluate teachers that are not in their buildings. In other words, principal at the high school would have to go to Riverside to evaluate a teacher, or covert to Wilson, or some other variation, if we didn't get this hardship waiver.
Okay.
So, it really represents just an undue burden and also what we consider it kind of a safety and security risk, especially for buildings with only one administrator. So, we've been asking for this hardship waiver for several years since it's been in place.
Okay. Thank you.
It actually is in response to a law that was passed four years ago. That went into effect for a very short period of time, and then it was realized that it was a terrible misstep by the state to get involved in it. Gave the State Education Department and the Commissioner of Education the opportunity to create this waiver, which they did. And now, we, in turn, each year now, for the last four, three years, I guess it is now, this is the third year, have brought before the board this opportunity to do the waiver.
Okay.
Hopefully, the legislation will change and it will disappear forever because this waiver can't go on forever.
Thank you. And Robert, other resolution listed as E, what's that for?
SECRE resolution is something that we're required to do when we go up to the state for approval of a project. We have, had had water penetrations at the middle school, so we have a fairly large project we've been working with our architects on. We're ready to send that up to the state, so we had to make a determination under SECRE, which is State Environmental Quality Review Act, on whether this was a Type 1 or a Type 2 project. We got J.C. Broderick, an environmental consulting firm, in just to review the project, just to make sure they've designated it as a Type 2, which does not require us to have any further action, but we do need to designate it as such in a resolution.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, we're doing everything except C, all the way through H and the addendum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to return to executive session to discuss specific personnel litigation matters?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. The next meeting is January 22nd.
Is this here?
It's a public work session. It's in the admin building.
It's in the admin.
Something's happening at the high school.